Good morning and welcome to the reconvening of our budget hearings. This morning, we will be addressing public safety, first with the Bureau of Administration, followed by the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, Bureau of Police, Bureau of Fire, and then lastly, the Bureau of Animal Care and Control. So those here with the Bureau of Administration, please come forward to the table. Our Director. I will turn it over to our Budget Director to give a overview of the Bureau, as well as highlights of the budget, and then we'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director.
Good morning. Bill Urbannick, Council Budget Director. We have Public Safety Administration with us to begin the day. Today, we're going to talk about forty percent of our budget, two hundred and forty-two-point-three million dollars. Public Safety Administration, the mission is to provide for the security and safety of all residents and patrons of the city of Pittsburgh through the oversight and execution of the public safety operational strategies through the planned and coordinated efforts of the bureaus of Police, Fire, Emergency Medical Services, and Animal Care and Control. This mission includes the creation of command team with representatives from Police, Fire, and EMS acting in conjunction as the Office of Emergency Management. The Department strives to improve community and first responders' safety through integrated response, training, technology, fleet upgrades, and increase community visibility, as well as by enhancing and enforcing team collaboration across all public safety bureaus. The Department furthers its mission through the streamlining of administrative positions to provide cross-training support and improve oversight on resources, spending, and hiring The budget numbers for Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Administration, the total budget is eleven million eight-hundred-four thousand dollars. That's a twenty-four percent increase over last year's budget. Number of employees is sixty-four, that's an increase of two. Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, part of it, the total budget, twenty-four million dollars, five percent increase, two-hundred-and-eleven EMTs currently. Well, currently, actually, there's a hundred-and-eighty-eight in total number of paramedics. Bureau of Police, the total budget is one-hundred-and-fourteen-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars, that's a ten percent increase over last year's spending. There are one-thousand-sixty-three funded positions total for multiple recruit classes, as well as clerical support and other folks within Bureau of Police. The total number of uniformed officers are going to be budgeted at nine-hundred next year. Wanted to mention the current staffing level is nine-hundred-and-sixty-three uniformed officers, which exceeds that nine-hundred number. Bureau of Fire, total budget ninety-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, a nineteen percent increase. Number of employees, six-hundred-and-seventy, plus funding for recruit classes. Uniform firefighters are budgeted for next year at six-hundred-and-sixty-seven. Our last personnel report showed a total number of six-hundred-and-seventy-eight, eleven more uniform firefighters than what is going to be budgeted next year. Bureau of Animal Care and Control, one-million-seven-hundred-thousand dollars, a one percent increase over last year, number of employees is sixteen, that's a one-third increase as a part-time animal control officer is promoted to full-time. There were a couple capital projects under Public Safety. Public Safety Cameras, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that's a pay-go-line item. Firefighting Equipment, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars. Hydraulic Rescue Tools, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in bond funds. The LA and OMB oversee purchase of public safety vehicles. The Bureau of Facilities in Department of Public Works oversees capital projects at the public safety facilities. DPW Facility Improvements and Deliverables for 2020, which we'll go over in the Department of Public Works budget. For public safety training facilities, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in 2020, with additional twenty million in later years. Police Zone Five Relocation, two-point-seven-million-dollar bond. Thaddeus Stevens Special Deployment Division, two-million-dollar in bond funds, as well as one-point-one-million in other funds. Police Zone Four Upgrades at nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in bond. Medic Four Redesigned, five-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars in bond funds for next year, 2020. Bureau of Administration specifically, as I mentioned, their budget, eleven-million-eight-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, is an increase of two-point-three-million dollars, and the positions increased by two. Salary and position changes of note, there's an addition of Assistant Director of Operations, ninety-five-thousand dollars. Increase in Emergency Management Planners from three to four, that's fifty-six-thousand-dollar addition. Decrease in Finance Administrators from three to two. Increase in Administrative Specialists from two to three, cost of thirty-six-thousand dollars. Increase in Public Safety Technology Manager from a thirty-three-D to a thirty-four-E, that's a seven-thousand-dollar increase. Removal of a part-time and seasonal recreation leader and recreation assistant, twenty-six-thousand dollars. There's also an addition of a part-time and seasonal AV event technician at the cost of twenty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. In the non-salary subclasses, they changed across fourteen lines in the budget, total increase of one-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars, or thirty-six percent. It's the largest increase for that, is for AEDs and heart monitors, one-point-four-million dollars, and you'll see that in that line item, machinery and equipment, as approved by Council last month. Other changes include in protective and investigative, an increase of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars. Vehicles increased by seventy-five-thousand dollars. Workforce Training increased by seven-thousand dollars. Land and Buildings increased by six-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. Operational Supplies, there's an increase of four-thousand. Professional Services actually decreased by thirty-two-hundred dollars. Grants to Zone Councils moved from the grant line item to the Operational Supply Item. The Bureau of Administration has free revenue sources. Northview Heights reimbursement from the Housing Authority, that's one-point-five-million dollars. Salaries and benefit reimbursement for Park Rangers and Rad Parks of two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars. And Fire Safety, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. There's also some trust funds associated specifically with the Department Bureau of Administration. Police Secondary Employment Trust Fund, the year-end balance expected to be two-point-seven million dollars. The anticipated revenue next year is nine-point-one-million dollars. Eight-point-two-million of that is for salary reimbursement, so that's when folks work, details, and other places outside the city, they are still city officers, so a trust fund was set up, the Secondary Employment Trust Fund set up, to be able to make sure those folks get paid and make sure that the process is fair. The Special Events Trust Fund, current balance is five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, includes funding for a part-time farmer's market site attendant. Public Safety Training Trust Fund, current balance is eight-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. Emergency Management Homeland Security Trust Fund, current balance, one-million-two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. The Mayor's Youth Initiative Trust Fund is two-hundred-and-three-thousand dollars. South Side Parking Enhancement District Fund is two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars. And Public Safety Support Trust Fund, current balance, two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. There's additional public safety trust funds that are housed in the respective bureaus, and we'll hit them as we move through. And we are joined by the Director today and his staff. So we'll get right on off.
Good morning. My name's Wando Hesrick, Public Safety Director, City of Pittsburgh, and I'd like for my Assistant Director to introduce herself, and we'll go down the line.
Good morning. Shetara Murphy, Assistant Director of Community Affairs.
Tony Landelina, Assistant Director of Administration.
Dan Shaq, Public Safety Technology Manager.
I'd just like to take a couple minutes and make an opening statement here. First off, I'd like to thank the Council members and your support as the lead for the Council's public safety. Also, the other city departments that have supported us throughout the year, the many police officers, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and animal care control officers that day-to-day handle the situations and emergencies that come up on a regular basis. The Public Safety Administration is currently broken up into the Administration, Community Affairs, and Operations and Technology side. The Operations side, as you mentioned, Mr. Urbannick, is the Assistant Director position has currently been listed in there as a new position to basically provide assistance as far as the operations of Police, Fire, EMS, and Animal Care and Control. The problems that I face on a daily basis is I have to be in two and three places at one time and can't handle all the meetings and events that occur, so that position was recommended and hopefully will be approved by Council. Emergency Management, as they have done for years, basically, they are an umbrella over all the three or four bureaus for planned and unplanned events, to work with our counter-interagency partners, to work with the community. Over the last two years, the active shooter training programs have been managed out of emergency management, evacuation drills, the public safety drills, and of course, the critical infrastructure liaisons that have to be done with the utility companies. Special Events was moved under Public Safety two years ago, responsible for the Great Race, responsible for oversight of the permits for special events, and summer concerts, movies in the park, and other assorted events that happen within the city that are sponsored by the city, and to work with the Public Safety, Public Works, as far as any promoters that want to come in and have special events in the city. The accomplishments over the last year, very close to activating the station alerting, which is now two years in the making. I believe that the station alerting has been installed in all the fire stations and all EMS, with the exception of one, and hopefully, we are waiting on software upgrades to be done, performed by the county, which should occur within the next few weeks, and hopefully, at the beginning of the next year, we can start bringing the stations online. Management of the incidents that have come up during the year, major incident this year was the Rossfield Trial, which took much planning and preparation throughout Public Safety, and for the most part, it was successful, allowing people to exercise their First Amendment rights while maintaining security for both protesters and the citizens and visitors of the city of Pittsburgh. Most recently, the sinkhole that occurred downtown, the management of that initially was under Public Safety with Emergency Management, Police, Fire, and EMS all working together to resolve the potential problems that faced us, to include the infrastructure. Fortunately, there was minor injuries in that, but we averted basically a disaster on that if the bus had been filled with individuals. Other accomplishments, the finalization and expansion of the ShotSpotter system, additional cameras, which Mr. Shaq will explain further. The community outreach continues to be improving throughout the years that I've been here, both with the GVI and community outreach personnel. We've had numerous successes. I think that we've, number one, been able to prevent many crimes from occurring within the city. The future goals of Public Safety Administration, which each chief will expand on as we go, as mentioned by Mr. Urbannick, was the authorization to purchase new AEDs and defibrillators for the city, to basically re, to place new ones on both fire vehicles and within the city. The current AEDs are reaching their capacity as far as battery life, and the defibrillators are well outside the lifespan. The endeavor will be that the defibrillators and AEDs will be compatible, so that when the first responders arrive on the scene and place the pads on the patient, all the medics will have to do is unplug the connection on it and plug the defibrillator on. Also, with this expansion, will be an expansion of placing AEDs on police vehicles, which has never occurred in the city of Pittsburgh. The body-worn cameras, which will be, once again, new technology has been developed, and each officer will receive new body-worn cameras, which will be interactive with new tasers. Each officer will be assigned a body-worn camera and a taser, meaning that if they unholster their taser or their duty weapon, the body-worn camera will immediately activate. The further outreach, which Assistant Director Murphy will go into regarding GVI and community outreach, as the mayor mentioned in the state of the city, the expansion of the substations to the south side and to the Homewood area, as well as the officers, which will be dedicated officers to those substations. And of course, new equipment continues with new technology throughout the city. We will expand the new technology being, whether it's with cameras. Tomorrow night, at the light-up night, we propose purchasing a SkyWatch tower, which will be introduced, which is basically, will give a new vantage point for police officers, which will be about thirty feet above the crowds, so that they will be able to monitor and have a wide-angle view of the crowd in the downtown area during light-up night. With that, I will turn it over to Assistant Director Murphy, and she can elaborate on the community outreach and what has been accomplished and goals for next year.
Thank you, Director. So I manage the Community Affairs area of the Department of Public Safety. There are seven divisions within Community Affairs. We have our outreach, which is education and programming to support Police, Fire, and EMS, primarily Police. There are two coordinators who work in that position. We also have Disruptive Properties, Nighttime Economy, Victim Services, the Park Rangers, the Multicultural Unit, and the Stop the Violence Coordinator, which was a position that was recently added this year. Before I get into giving you a little bit of information about what each of those areas do and what they're responsible for, I do want to give a little shout-out, if you will, to two areas within outreach. One is John Tarkarsky. He received a community award from the Greenfield Community Association for all his hard work and his dedication to making that area and that neighborhood safer, and keeping the relationships between the residents, the community groups in that area, and public safety very close. And then also, our Park Rangers received the Community Partner of the Year Award from Tree Pittsburgh, which is a major award for them to receive. They planted over one-hundred trees throughout the city so far in 2019, and I'll elaborate a little bit more about some of the accomplishments of the Park Rangers. So Victim Services, we've had a really strong program with our referral program that we have through Police, Fire, and EMS, so when we identify individuals or situations that need further follow-up that might require some social services, that is where our former Victims Assistance Coordinator Dana would come in and actually work with the individuals. Sometimes we find that these repeat calls that the officers were receiving throughout the zones were actually due in part to domestic situations that needed to be followed up with the courts, not necessarily the police. Services that needed to provide to juveniles who are having issues within their homes that our officers unfortunately cannot handle, but Dana was able to provide them with local resources and things like that to actually get the families the help that they need. And again, the goal and the effort behind that was to actually identify what the true issues were that were causing these repeat calls, and then hopefully, to see a decrease in those repeat calls. So we are currently in the process of rewriting that position description now that we know a little bit better what we're looking for out of that role, and how that role can better support the department, since Dana has left us to take care of her twice. She decided to leave her position and become, stay at home and be a full-time mom, but she's still a great support and volunteers with the department every week. So our Park Rangers, one of their biggest programs is the Ranger Program that they have for the fifth graders on the north side. Right now, we're looking for funding to expand that across the city, because it has been well-received. We have other communities asking for that program, and we also have the school districts.
Which program?
It is the north side program that they have for the fifth graders. It's their explorers program.
Sorry, I missed that.
Oh, it's okay. It teaches the fifth graders about the parks and nature and things like that, and also explores like different career areas that they have, and like environmental science and things like that, so getting people comfortable with being out in the parks and taking tours and things like that. So we want to expand that across the city, so we are looking for funding to actually do that, since the requests have been there. The Rangers have been really good with off-the-leash incidents. We've had a number of dogs off-leash issues, where people are calling the police, or they're contacting Public Safety, just expressing safety concerns about the dogs being off-leash, so there was a whole campaign behind that, the Rangers providing leashes to park-goers that have dogs, so that they can put their dogs on leashes, working on getting signage in the parks to make sure that people know what are the designated off-leash areas and what aren't, and you know, that's helped tremendously. And the support that you all gave for the Public Safety Zone Councils and providing them funding to continue to support the work of the city has been well-received. Their group of volunteers dedicated to each police zone, and they're free volunteers, they use their own personal time, and a lot of the time, their own personal resources, to make sure that they're supporting us by way of meetings, getting information out there, when they see problems in their communities, inviting special guests to come and speak with residents, and things like that. So you all graciously gave us two-thousand dollars to support each of the Zone Councils, and what we will do at the end of the year is give you a report on how that money was spent, and reasons why we need to continue to include that money in the budget year after year. Disruptive Properties has been vacant for some time. We did hire a new coordinator, his name is Ian Reynolds, and as of this week, we've been working with the Police Bureau to update trainings, not only for our officers, but for community partners as well. And the approach to outreach that we are going to take in educating this time around will be for the landlords. Since the ordinance is pretty much dedicated to landlords, property owners, we want to make sure that that is a target population that we're going after, and our hopes is that they can adopt some of this information in their lease, or at least provide it to their tenants when they're providing leases, so that they can read it over and understand what those expectations are. So we will continue to work on that throughout the year. In Nighttime Economy, we have been well-received by businesses, bars, and entertainment venues. They've come to us for different trainings, they now understand the importance of the partnership that they need to have with the community for compliance, occupancy issues, just making sure that the relationship between these event venues, or the owners, are tight with the police, because a lot of the times, we can prevent a lot of the issues that we have with education, and then also, too, with a lot of the developments that are going on. People are building businesses, bars, entertainment venues below residential properties, and so having the tenants understand what the culture of the area that they're moving into, and then also, the property owners, to help them with designing places of business that are, so basically crime by environmental design, so that they are designing their businesses in a way that just deter crime. So they've been partnering with our members of the Nighttime Economy Office to make sure that that is happening and that is being well-received. We have a Stop the Violence Coordinator who's working closely with our GVI partners, just to make sure that all of the administrative work is going smoothly, and then also to collecting information on all of the groups within the city of Pittsburgh that are doing anti-violent or violent reduction initiatives, to make sure that we have the city of Pittsburgh represented in those initiatives moving forward. And then lastly, the Multicultural Liaison Unit, which is a partner between the Bureau of Police, Public Safety, and the Mayor's Office. We were awarded a grant from HIND for fifty-thousand dollars to do a cross-cultural competency training. We put an RFP out, we do not have enough money to get the training that we want based off of the RFPs that we receive, so we are now in the process of, we have a meeting with HIND scheduled on the twenty-sixth, to talk about the results of the RFP that we received, and to talk about what we can do with the fifty-thousand dollars, and we are working with the Welcoming Pittsburgh Steering Committee, or Advisory Committee, as they are now being called, to continue that work.
Amazing, and no papers in front of me.
I have a little notepad right here on my lap.
She has a teleprompter.
Cheater.
All right, if I may, Dan Shaq, who is the Program Manager of the Technology for Public Safety, has a brief statement.
Thank you, Director. Good morning. 2020 will be the final year of a three-year capital investment into the city's public safety, security, and camera network. In the past two years, significant improvements and upgrades have been made to this network. We began two years ago with two-hundred-and-twenty-six street-level security cameras. At that point, most of them were outside of their warranty period and have reached end-of-life. With the funding that has been made possible through this project, one-hundred-and-eighty of those cameras were upgraded to high-definition pantiled zoom cameras. The overall network has tripled, bringing the number to near six-hundred-and-eighty cameras by the end of 2019. This network has aided the Police Bureau in solving many crimes, serves as a deterrent for illegal activity, and it also accompanies the eighteen square miles of ShotSpotter that we have deployed throughout the city. Also this week, as the Director had mentioned, you know, we took delivery of the FLIR SkyWatch Mobile Observation Platform. This technology was first introduced to special events on the north shore. It was found very advantageous to our operations. You know, tomorrow at light-up night, we'll kick that off as the first deployment. It'll give the officers a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view over an incident, nearly two stories in the air, to quickly direct ground units to those incidents. As we enter 2020, the tools that were funded through these projects, as well as the staffing of the Bureau of Police's Real-Time Crime Center that you'll hear about later, will bring many advantages to the department. Each year, we try to outdo the previous, as we learn from the past, to implement new technologies and strategies. Thank you.
This time, we're open for any questions you have, sir.
Thank you. Councilman, any questions?
Oh, do you want to start, or do you want me to start? Go ahead.
So, one, congratulations, Director, on your SkyWatch tower. I know this has been something you've actually...
If you want to stop down, we'll give you a ride tomorrow. It is neat.
I mean, I know this is something you've actually wanted for a while now, so congratulations on having that actually occur. Couple quick questions. The Victims Assistance Coordinator, what's the timeline for a replacement?
Early January.
Okay. Now, second question, should there be an assistant?
What do you mean?
Should there be more than one person doing that work?
Yes. I wish Dana was here to express how overwhelming it is, just reviewing police reports, doing outreach, the follow-up, managing a database, it's a lot for one person, but we were making it work. And then also, too, assisting with all of the follow-up from October twenty-seventh from the Tree of Life, we've been very much involved with resiliency planning, and so we participate and attend in those meetings every week. The Resiliency Center will be up and running pretty soon at the JCC. I encourage everybody to take a tour of it when it's complete, but that's also something that our Victims Assistance Coordinator was very active in.
So thank you. I ask because I think that position is critical, and the importance of it, I think there should probably be more than one person doing it. So what I would ask is if you can send over a recommendation for what a second position would look like, and or what classification, and then we can look to see if we can add that to this year's budget.
Thank you, sir.
The multicultural training, you mentioned the fifty K is not enough. What is needed?
So one response, and don't quote me, because I don't have the proposals right in front of me, so these are rough estimates. One came in, I want to say, over a hundred-and-fifty K, the other one, maybe closer to like three-hundred. Maybe we were overly ambitious when we put this out, but what we wanted to do was just do a competency training on the cultures that we have represented here in the Pittsburgh region that our first responders that would come in contact with. There are a lot of cultural norms that we're just... There are a lot of cultural norms that we're just not aware of, so then when we go to respond, it may create an issue and it's not because our first responders don't care, they lack compassion, it's just that they're not-
They're not good.
Yeah, on, you know, those cultural norms. So we feel like providing them with the tools and the resources to do their job to the best of their abilities was something that the multicultural liaison unit was dedicated to doing. We also wanted to have a reference guide that we could leave at all of our public safety buildings so that you can just get familiar with the populations and demographics that are represented in those communities. So if you know that you have a call and you're going somewhere, you can always reference back to the zone if you need it, some quick tips or need it something to understand. And we wanted to implement this as a trainer, train the trainer style and the training academy as well. So we would own the training, we could update the training, we could change the training, we did not have to go back to the original person who provided the training or the original company that provided the training if we wanted any updates. So we asked for a lot, not knowing how much it was going to cost, but now that we have a better understanding, our plan is to implement this in phases. So what can we get in phase one for $50,000 and then phase two may cause, cost this, phase three will cost this, and then phase four will be like full implementation of what our original plan was.
So towards that end, I know you're going to go back to HIND, but I would also suggest you send over a recommendation for what the additional cost would be.
Okay.
And then we can also look at that as well for this year's budgeting process. Director, you mentioned the Rothschild trial, but there were also some additional incidents that occurred in our city, most recently the, what I'll call the tragedy that happened at the gas station and some other incidents where sort of there was then a public response and public demonstrations, et cetera, et cetera. And one, I just want to commend you and the chief is not sitting at the table, but Chief Schubert as well, for how the police handled those situations and the ability to allow the public to have their space and to be able to have their voices heard and to be able to demonstrate appropriately without arrests needing to be made, allowing for protests to occur in downtown, guiding them through our streets. That takes a very, that's a very intentional effort to allow that to occur and to work with the organizers on the ground. So I just wanted to commend you all for that work and thank you for allowing those demonstrations to take place appropriately.
Yes, and I, I have to compliment Chief Schubert. I mean, he brought a, a plan to the table with the civil affairs team that he is, he observed in other cities and it's been replicated in, in Pittsburgh and I'll allow him to explain that when he comes here. But, I mean, that team has been very successful in basically preventing any type of violence during a protest and demonstration and I'll let him explain the team and I believe he actually wants to expand that team and, but, I mean, the police officers, their, the de-escalation techniques that have been trained to them and allowing the protesters and making sure that they're safe, I mean, it should be commended.
I can add a little bit to that just for, for context. The civil affairs team is pretty amazing in areas in which demonstrators would be hesitant to communicate with the police officer during such incidents. They're welcoming of the civil affairs team. They call them, they have their cell phone numbers. Sometimes they'll let them know that things are happening before they even happen. And so, you know, with the support of the, and of the director and of Chief Schubert, I think it's been a wonderful addition to the bureau and the community has received the civil affairs team very well.
Thank you. With that being said, I do want to put one concern on the table, which is simply our public informations officer, being a little more communicative, especially with council colleagues. So as an example, with the, the gas station incident, Commander Ragland was very responsive. And so in my own ignorance, I had a lot of questions about why these arrests weren't made, why was happening, et cetera, et cetera. And he was, he spent a lot of time on the phone educating me towards the process, but I think it also would be helpful when we have major incidents in the city if our public informations officer were a little more quicker responsive, reaching out to colleagues with the information so that we can appropriately disseminate it out into the community as well. That was, that is it for me. Councilwoman?
Okay. Well, I have to hit a, a gas station, I guess, because it's in my district and I do think that everyone did a great job on that. It was very touchy, touch and go and Commander Ragland just was wonderful during the whole thing. So that's who I usually get to talk to on issues like that. So, um, when the police come up, I'll just have to give him another gold star because he's, he's a good person. Matter of fact, I think I've had all good commanders. This is my 14th commander that I've worked with. So, and if you notice, as you were reading your paper, most everything starts on the north side. However, I brought ShotSpotter to Pittsburgh and we couldn't start that due to the fact we're not flat and the best place we could start that was in Homewood. And I was looking that we could find out who, you know, and get there faster, but it was just amazing how many lives have been saved now due to just having those. And I know we were second to, to have the ShotSpotter brought, brought in because of the hills and valleys and that was really tough for them to, but they did, they put it in great areas and I even helped add more cameras to that in my district and I just have to say, say thanks to you especially, gosh. Mike, it's not your first name.
Dan.
Dan, I'm sorry, Dia. It's just too many faces I remember right off the bat, names I'm, I'm pretty horrible with, but thank you for working with me and the community because the community actually felt that the public safety department would know better exactly where to put those cameras due to what's happening in those areas. They have worked out well and I hope for more cameras. I, I know on the north side, we have cameras we gave the neighborhoods and they're utilized too, but I, I think ShotSpotter has really done the job and I'm, I'm just amazed at it saving lives. I do want to ask you, and I think everybody here has been doing a great job, money-wise, as I was just putting it over, in public safety for the AEDs. I want to thank you for all the patience you had on that and hopefully they'll get out before the end of the year. The money should be there now. I put AEDs in each one of my senior, if it was, if it's not a senior center that I put it in, I also put it in the high-rises. They don't even know that yet, but, and we had to turn around and get the other ones after I talked to you that we were getting the new AEDs. That would be much better, so, um, they're the ones we're going to get now. So that's everything's compatible with what we have at EMS. Going back to, I highlighted it somewhere here. Trying to remember everything I needed to ask. Oh, it's on the paper, that's what. Guess I'll grab, here it is. Okay, the Northview Heights reimbursement from the housing authority. Now, is that taking care of anything like the officers that we have up there?
Yes, it supplements the officers, it supplements the, the technology to include the cameras system up there, the ShotSpotter system, yes.
Okay. Cleaning, everything?
I don't know if they, they provide the cleaning or if we do that.
I think we do that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think-
I mean, it's not 100%, but it does help us out considerably.
Uh-huh. Okay. And the park rangers, they're going into the schools now.
Mm-hmm.
Just wonder where that fire safety truck is. I guess they're not out there. I was a little concerned about the police secondary employment trust fund. That's something that I started years ago because we had a lawsuit that cost the city over a million dollars and what is to be paid out of that now that the city takes all the money, the officers naturally are paid out of it. If they tear any clothes, if they need extra coats or something happens to a car, they need a vehicle that's used just for secondary employment. But that number just looks low. Can, can we talk about that a little bit?
Certainly.
I, I know that it looks like it's anticipated about the 8,280,000 would be salary reimbursement for 220. And we're only going to have 896,000. That just sounds like a small number too. Are we not doing a lot of secondary employment now or am I looking at the numbers wrong?
You're saying what is left over from the salary reimbursement? Is that what you're asking, Councilwoman?
Yeah, this is, this is on their secondary employment.
Correct.
Because we, we wanted to take a little bit of money and, you know, put it in a fund and we did that with that legislation when we first started that.
Right, for the trust.
Right. And that was before you got here. And then we decided that it would be better if we did some legislation and-
Well, I mean, the money is coming in to support the trust fund from the, what is billed to the, the individuals that use the secondary, the detailed officers.
Okay.
And what-
If I could interject this, just briefly. On page 329 in the city's operating budget, you'll see the, the trust fund detailed, including the creation of the trust fund and such, but you also see the flow of funds. Yes, it, it actually, the secondary employment reimbursement is down 1.7 million dollars over last year, that specific detail line. Now, i- it's detailed out to show what the city receives, which would be that secondary employment fee.
Where are you at on here, Bill?
On page 329, ma'am, on the 11 page.
Okay, I'm on it.
Okay. If you look, it'll say revenues in, charges for service.
Right.
So i- if you see for 2019, there was 10,907,000 in. There, there is a secondary employment fee of 750,000, $5,000 equipment usage and 78,000 vehicle usage fee. The total reimbursement for 2019 was 10,074,000 for police officers. For next year's budgeting-
What, what is the equipment user fee and the vehicle user fee?
That's if the vehicle is required for the secondary employment. For instance, if you have to block traffic for a movie shoot, if, you know, if it requires the officer to use a vehicle, that's what the usage fee is. I mean, you know, they are billed for the use of the vehicle.
Okay, so if you're blocking it, you have to use a vehicle.
I mean, there are some-
How much are you charging for the vehicle?
I don't know offhand on that one.
I think it's around 150 dollars.
Can, can you give me a breakdown of how, you know, the, the equipment and a vehicle, you know, what, what's happening there? I, I just want to make sure that there is enough money for anything that the officers might need for secondary employment on that. But thanks, Bill, I didn't look at this page.
Yeah, no problem. We should include this, the trust fund pages in, in your detail.
I, and I know I don't have to say this to you, but I am because I don't, I, I just don't think anybody in public safety has a problem that we know of, but we're, we do not hire anyone that are working around children that haven't had clearances. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, on EMS, you will see that as time goes on, there's required additional clearances and we will be fulfilling that with EMS this year.
Great. Okay, I guess everything else that, oh, I wanted to ask you about the trees. You were talking, you sort of talked about getting the, do, do you know where those trees went?
I can get a breakdown of where all the trees are planted.
You did?
No, I can get that.
Oh, would you? Okay. Because what I think of every time I think of trees is the hillsides that, that we are losing and have lost due to trees falling and that's been a real concern of mine. Do we still have the police, well, I'll ask that under police. Thank you and thank you all for what you do. I've never come down and couldn't get ahold of one of you, day or night, and you, you're always out on the scene and chipping in.
I try.
How is, how is Washington Boulevard going, by the way?
As far as the flooding or as far as the gates?
Both.
Well, the gates, there was an accident that occurred last Saturday night and we sustained damage to one of the sensors and we're working to replace that. And once we replace that, we will once again have to test the system. We have added an additional gate as you come down Highland Drive. The system up to that accident was fully functional. Flooding through the help of Public Works keeping the storm drains clear is, we have not had any significant flooding there. But we will be, like I say, running a test again to make sure everything's working once that the sensor is repaired. It seems that the sensors and the gates seem to have magnets for cars. They seem to keep running into our, our infrastructure there, so. But once again, I have to compliment Dan, working with DOMI to, and Public Works to be able to build that system up. When we inherited the system, I could, we could not rely on that system and I'm starting to feel, we still have barricades down there in case the gates don't work, the officers are still trained, but I'm starting to feel rather confident that the system will function if required.
Do they have any efforts going on again to put trees all in that area sort of to suck up?
That, you would have to ask Public Works on that question.
Okay.
We are working, as was mentioned, to relocate Zone 5 back to East Liberty and what is done with that property, it will not be a public safety facility because of the flooding down there.
Thank you. It's not my area, but you know, I guess we all work on the whole city, so, thank you.
Thank you. If we could have the Bureau of EMS, please come forward.
If we could have the Bureau of EMS, please come forward.
Highlights include operating supplies decreasing by twenty-seven thousand dollars, excuse me. Employment-related services increased by ten thousand, promotional decreased by three thousand, administrative fees increased by one, and thirty-nine thousand dollars was transferred from vehicles to repairs. Emergency medical services revenue, medical services revenue of twelve million seven hundred and six hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars, that's a decrease of three percent from 2019, but still an increase of eighteen percent since the 2018 budget. Emergency medical services has some capital line that is the, in the Equipment Leasing Authority, which oversees the purchase of ambulances and other EMS vehicles. Total capital acquisition is five million six, five point six million dollars in the LA plan. A preliminary plan calls for the purchase of three ambulances. The Department of Public Works capital projects at public safety facilities, including the medic for design of five hundred and one thousand dollars. Emergency medical services also has a couple trust funds. The reimbursement, reimbursable event trust fund, current balance of one point five million dollars. EMS hazardous materials trust fund, the current balance is seventy-eight thousand dollars. And if I just take a, one second, there is a note of concern that I saw between the budget and the current numbers, and that is in the area of premium pay. The Office of Management and Budget's third quarter report projects a five point five million dollar year-end in premium pay and overtime. That's two point seven million dollars over the current, current budgeted amount, so there, there would be a question of whether staffing, the current contract, and how that works out. What is, you know, whether we can be confident because the numbers are budgeted at that two point seven million dollars for 2020 as well, too. So there needs to be some, a little bit of clarification regarding why that's happened, and hopefully how that will be relieved in 2020.
Anything you want to add?
Ron Romano, Chief, Pittsburgh EMS.
Deputy Chief, I'm Mara Gilchrist with EMS.
I want to thank all the EMS personnel that are now on the streets every day and providing for the sick and injured, as always, something that I always say, say to them. At the end of October, Pittsburgh EMS was presented with the 2019 Cares Award in recognition for dedication to quality improvement of care for out-of-hospital cardiac arrest by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, which is a great honor. We also received for the second year in a row a Gold Plus Mission Lifeline Award from American Heart Association for our STEMI care, getting people to cath labs in timely manners from their homes, et cetera. Reaching out to your question, as of December second, we, we will be fully staffed and slightly plus going into 2020. We'll have seven new paramedics coming on December second.
Paramedics?
Paramedics. And that will put us a little bit over our staffing going into the new year, which will cover for a few retirements that I know are occurring and a couple people that already, that are moving on to another career, who have reached out to me for that. So we have gone to great strides to keep our personnel levels up, and it's starting to succeed.
So you would say it's the staffing levels is what?
As we went through the twelve-hour shifts throughout this past, this, this year of nineteen, we didn't, we had numerous vacancies, which didn't, didn't help the, the schedule. Yeah, so now we're, we're up to the, we're up to our numbers depending on injuries and we're, you know, accidents, sickness, but we're doing a lot better. Recently, we've been, been able to deflect some additional units during.
There was just a huge anticipation of having that number reduced in, in 2019.
We were, we had probably twelve vacancies plus our injuries.
Right.
You know, you, so you're running some days twenty-plus people short.
But you're confident that two point seven.
Well, I'm confident, but, you know, we.
We'll be close.
Yes.
Premium pay, yeah. Okay, thank you. Your, your folks do a fantastic job.
Yeah.
We appreciate their service.
Thank you very much, and I, as always, I thank council for their support.
If I may also, I, prior to last, or this year, I, very few individuals wanted to be a paramedic within the city of Pittsburgh. The schedule changed to twelve-hour shifts, basically allowing them more days off, even though they're working more hours, and the pay, significant pay raise, we now have people that want to come, become paramedics within the city. And I have to compliment the chief and his staff for the recruiting drive that they've done over the year. I mean, we actually have more people than there are positions for in the city, and I, I won't say, don't hold me to this, but I think being at full staffing or a little bit more will alleviate a lot of that premium pay in the upcoming year.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
So, do you have anything?
Yeah, but go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm brief. One, congratulations on the work you've done over the last year to get the bodies that are necessary. You all do a phenomenal job. I think you are tops in the country in terms of the services you provide, and I think we're all very proud of our EMS department, so thank you both for what you've done. Is there anything that you believe is critical to the budget that is not already in here?
No, I, I believe we're satisfactory from last year to, you know, from this year to next year, where we have the resources to get the job done. It hasn't been really much change, as you can see, it's just moved, you know, some, some dollars around. And, you know, we continue, we continue to train every day and improve every day. We don't rest on what we've done, we, we hope to do better.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Okay, I just want to thank you guys for all you do. I guess you don't realize until you need the paramedics, actually need the paramedics. And I've needed you quite a few times over the years, and I couldn't ask for better people between you and the fire coming to the house. You really have done a lot, and people have to really see you in action, you know, firefighters. I mean, Chicago Med just doesn't do it, or Chicago Fire, compared to the real life that you do. I, I was looking for the AEDs, am I missing them? Are they in your budget?
Administration.
Okay.
Because it covers not only EMS, it's EMS, fire, and police.
Okay. And then your negotiations are over? Your negotiations?
Not exactly, we're, we still have some things that we need to iron out.
Language.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, but I understand it's somewhere around twenty-nine percent with everything together.
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, budget may be able to tell you better.
Okay. Aren't you the budget guy?
I'm the management budget, I'm not the.
Bill?
I, I, I'll get you the number, okay?
Okay, okay. But do you feel that, that, I guess since we're getting more paramedics?
It is, as the director said, it's one of the premier systems, and we're paying, we're paying in that direction, and people are interested in testing with us to become one of our personnel, and we may have, we may have a waiting list going into the.
That's great, that's great. I, I do remember a few of them from outside the city saying, you know, someday they'd like to work for the city, so that also brings them into the city to live. I think that's it. And, and you being a paramedic for the city at one time.
I'm still a paramedic, please.
For the city?
I'm still a paramedic, I still maintain my certification. They still allow me to.
I'll tell you real.
Treat some patients.
I did not know that. That's, that's great. I think that's all I had question-wise. Just can't say enough about you. Thank you, and please, that's, that means all you guys and ladies.
Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. Chief Schubert will now move on to the Bureau of Police.
No unions this time. No unions.
I'm sure they're watching.
They were here, they were actually here at the beginning.
Because usually we get to ask them questions, too.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yes, the mission of the Bureau of Pittsburgh Police is commitment to professional service to all, to be a source of pride for our city and a benchmark for policing excellence. The Bureau of Police stands ready to protect human life, serve without reservation or favor, stand as partners with all, and help all communities live free from fear. The Bureau of Police provides law enforcement and public safety services to Pittsburgh's residents and visitors. The Bureau is organized into the chief's office and four main branches, which are each led by a sworn assistant chief of police. The total budget this year for the, the police, Bureau of Police, one hundred and fourteen million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand and fifty-four dollars. That's an increase of ten million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, or ten percent. Total full-time positions, one hundred and sixty-six. Total uniformed police officers, budgeted, nine hundred and one. My last personnel report shows nine hundred and sixty-three uniformed officers.
Give us a copy of that.
Yeah.
Is it in there? Am I missing it?
The number of uniformed officers currently, I, I'm stating.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, the, the current number of.
Home page.
Uniformed officers, now nine hundred and sixty-three. Plus, there's nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget for police recruits, salary allowances, part-time and temporary employees. Uniformed police staffing changes due to Hillman domestic violence grant, one sergeant moved from the operating budget to the grants account, an additional police officer detective was added, bringing the total uniform strength to nine hundred and one. Police detective change from an additional allowance to its own position classification, as well as yearly changes within those classifications. I know the contract is currently out, so these things may change in the meantime, so I'm giving you the best information we have at this point. Civilian staff position and salary changes, a new category and classification system for crossing guards. Budgeted guards remain at one hundred and three. There's an additional real-time crime specialist for forty-five thousand six hundred dollars, an increased administrative specialist from four to five, thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Clerical specialist is decreased from thirty-nine to thirty-seven, from a thirty-nine to a thirty-seven. Those will be at thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars each. In-grade pay increase, four point seven million, leave buyback is increased by four hundred and twenty-seven. And as I mentioned, the, the contract is still not finalized, so we may see some changes here or there, up or down. Non-salary subclass changes across nine line items, total increase of one point one five million dollars, eight point, eighteen point two percent. The highlights include police headquarters rent increased from one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars to one point six six million. Body cameras increased from six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to almost two million dollars, and also moved from the line item from fifty-six, one, fifty-one to fifty-seven. Protective investigative decreased from two hundred and three thousand dollars. There was some GVI costs moved to the Public Safety Administration. Professional services increased by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Maintenance decreased by one hundred and ten. Animal service, animal services increased by ninety thousand dollars, and legal fees increased by seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars on the second page here. Bureau of Police has no capital projects. There is some ELA in here. The, this year's portion is one point seven million dollars, and the public safety admin budget has slight increase from 2019. I'd like to highlight the purchase that the mayor had announced of thirty-two new Ford hybrid interceptors, which will provide even a little bit better service than the previous year, but also see some large fuel savings and safety for our, for officers as well, too, increase in safety. Public safety cameras overseen by the, is overseen by the public administration, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Facility improvements overseen by DPW. Police Zone Five relocation to two point seven, as I mentioned before. Police Zone Four, there's upgrades due this year, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is Steven Skoll, the deployment, special deployment division, two million dollar in bond funds, as well as one point one million in other funds. Public safety training facilities, six hundred thousand dollars in 2020, and another nineteen point five million is budgeted through the five-year plan, or six-year capital plan. There are no current funds for creating police substations. Police has several trust funds. We mentioned and spoke briefly about the Police Secondary Employment Trust Fund. You can find that on three hundred, page three hundred and twenty-nine of the operating budget. Confiscated narcotics proceeds trust fund, the current balance, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Confiscated non-narcotics proceeds trust fund, current balance, one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Federal task force trust fund, eighty-five thousand dollars. Graffiti trust fund, seventy-six thousand dollars. Mounted police trust funds, four thousand, and is also eighteen thousand. Drug abuse resistant education, the DARE program trust fund, current balance, seventy-five hundred dollars. District Nine Crime Prevention Trust Fund, seven thousand dollars. And the Witness slash Criminal Intelligence Trust Fund, current balance, three hundred dollars. The police has one revenue line item in police records, that's increasing by eight percent. I also noticed there's a slight increase in the, in our fee book that we got regarding the, the cost of those reports. And with that, that'll be it. And just a comment on the chief, besides the excellent job you do, you're also one heck of a photographer, and I appreciate your, your artistic support on an annual basis, helping to supply us with a budget cover, so, thank you, sir. Hopefully you can do it again.
Chief, is there anything you want to add?
Just one, on behalf of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, thank you for the outstanding support that we get through council throughout the year. Anytime we need something, you're very receptive to, to help us, to help keep Pittsburgh safer in the mayor's office, and really, too, just want to say thank you to the officers who are out in the field each and every day, who are keeping Pittsburgh safe, who are working with the community to make the city safer and a better place to live, and that's the officers, detectives, supervisors, and our civilian staff, who are behind the scenes keeping us going so we can do what we do out in the field, so I just wanted to say that. And we also have Lee Schmidt with us from our.
Please?
All right. But just to kind of go into our mandates that continue each year, and our, our main mandate is to reduce violent crime. We have.
Fund, current balance, three hundred dollars. The Police has one revenue line item in police records, that's increasing by eight percent. I also noticed there's a slight increase in the, in our fee book that we got regarding the, the cost of those reports. And with that, that'll be it. And just a comment on the chief, besides the excellent job you do, you're also one heck of a photographer, and I appreciate your, your artistic support on an annual basis, helping to supply us with a budget cover. So, thank you, sir. Hopefully you can do it again.
Chief, is there anything you want to add?
Just one, on behalf of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, thank you for the outstanding support that we get through council throughout the year. Anytime we need something, you're very receptive to, to help us, to help keep Pittsburgh safer in the mayor's office. And really, too, just want to say thank you to the officers who are out in the field each and every day, who are keeping Pittsburgh safe, who are working with the community to make the city safer and a better place to live. And that's the officers, detectives, supervisors, and our civilian staff, who are behind the scenes, keeping us going so we can do what we do out in the field. So, I just wanted to say that. And we also have Lee Schmidt with us from our.
Please?
All right. But just to kind of go into our mandates that continue each year, and our, our main mandate is to reduce violent crime. We have the GVI, we have the outreach workers, we have our violence, violent crime response protocol that each of the zones do. And so far this year, we're at thirty-three homicides, which is a thirty-nine percent decrease from two thousand and eighteen. Our non-fatal shootings are up slightly, but over a period of time with GVI, we, we still see a decrease in that. So, we're very, we're happy with what's, how we're handling it, and we're doing it. But as we always say, obviously, one fatality, one shooting is one too many. So, we're doing everything we can to work better, to work smarter, using technology, using our community engagement and everything to work together as a team to help reduce that. Another area of our community engagement, or mandates, is our community engagement. A lot of things that we do out in each of the zones, through headquarters, through investigations, being out there partnering, not just meetings, but putting things together ourselves. We just finished a partnership in the, the North Side with Cops and Hoops, where we brought officers in to talk about what they do, and ended up doing a basketball game two weeks ago, and then we had a, a small banquet last week. And to see the interaction means a lot, helping to build that, that trust within the community. And for me, it's always about to future recruitment to, within Pittsburgh Police or Public Safety. Within the community engagement, one thing that we're really striving to do, we put Sergeant Tiffany Klein Costa as a position where she's full-time, working out of our office, actually, she's over at the academy, trying to make sure that we're being consistent in every zone, in everything we do, in officers that are working as a CROs, NROs, and to include officers on a, on a street, and then the recruits coming out, so they understand what we're trying to do, that it's not a program, it's a philosophy of who we are within Pittsburgh Police. The director mentioned before about the Civil Affairs Team. That's been very successful for us. We have a couple supervisors, which Tiffany Klein Costa and Sergeant Mitchell sort of lead it, and then there's other officers who have been just fantastic out there, talking, getting to know people, talking before things happen, being there when events are occurring, talking with the people, and trying to keep things, and de-escalate things from occurring. And they've been very successful. So, we are, it was kind of an ad hoc team that we put together. They're in the process of making it a full-time squad unit with officers that work other duties, but when we need them for this, that they can, they can do it. So, we're very proud of what's going on with, with that. Another thing of our mandates is the technology. You've heard a lot through the director on the, the Shot Spotter and the, the camera systems around the, the city, which have been an incredible tool for, for public safety. On another level, we have the Bodyworn Camera and Tasers, which we were here before. That's going to provide a, a lot of value for, for the city of Pittsburgh. We did implement a real-time crime center. We're, we're building it. We have officers that are working it on the, the AM shift, and when special events occur. And they're also working on Friday and Saturday evenings with, to monitor what's going on in the South Side Flats. That's been very successful, because they're tying in all the cameras, they're tying in the Shot Spotter, and it's going to be a great thing for the officers, so they have instant information going out to them to help keep them safe, to help keep the public safe, and to help with investigations. Another thing is our officer wellness, because obviously, you know, we want to make sure we're taking care of our officers. We want them to, to make sure that they're well before they go out on the street. We're, we're all human, we all have problems, and, you know, we want to make sure we have the resources for, for them. Our PMAP, our Peer Support Team, has done a great job as well. We have an Officer Wellness Coordinator, and that's, knock on wood, we've been very thankful that we haven't seen any police-involved suicides. But I can think of probably about twelve to fourteen in my twenty-seven years of Pittsburgh Police Officers who have committed suicide. You're seeing it very prevalent right now in New York City. There's a number of officers that have committed suicide this year, and it's something that we need to main, stay on top of, and provide all the help, resources, and let our officers know that it's, it's okay not to be okay. We have a very stressful job, a very dangerous job, and we want to make sure that they're healthy. So, that's one of our, our mandates. And then obviously, recruitment is, is another one of our mandates, particularly minority recruitments. And it's not been easy in recruitment in this field across the country, trying to hire police officers. The recruitment level has gone down dramatically for, for a variety of reasons. But we continue to do everything we can to promote all the good things that you can do within Pittsburgh Police, all the opportunities that you have within Pittsburgh Police for advancement, and, you know, being the change you want to see in policing. So, those are, those are sort of our, our mandates on that. Obviously, the, the level of training we provide far exceeds what other places in Pennsylvania one require or offer. We want to make sure that our officers are equipped, trained, to handle any situation in a professional manner, and to keep them safe. And so, with a normal class, maybe, you know, several, several months through MOPAC, through the state mandated training, we add on several, several more months of training with the patrol rifle, with the tasers, with the Bodyworn Camera, with de-escalation. I mean, the list goes on. The great thing is, we provide it so they can do their job in the field. The bad thing is, other departments want that. So, they, they heavily recruit our officers for that, to, to come onto their department. But we have a great department, we're doing a lot of great things. There's a lot of things that we want to do in two thousand and nineteen to keep that momentum going. And, and I just see better things happening for the department, and better things happening for the, for the city.
So, I've said it once, but I just want to again commend your ad hoc, but soon to be permanent Civil Affairs Team for the work that they're doing. I think it's outstanding how we, how you interact with the community now, and that's very intentional on your part, so I want to thank you for that. Also want to commend you on the thirty-nine percent decrease in homicides that we've seen in our city. I think it's a combination of a lot of things. I think GVI plays a significant role. I think the community-oriented policing, the civil affairs, I think all of that equals out to what we're, what we're seeing. Shot Spotter, all of those sort of combine and make it. So, again, thank you for the, for that work and for that effort.
And the medics in the, in fire, with the first responders do, they're, they're incredible. We're very fortunate in the city of Pittsburgh to have, have them.
If I may, also the police officers, I mean, they're arriving at scenes, they're using trauma dressings, they're using tourniquets, and basically saving lives has never happened before. So, I mean, the police officers, and, you know, soon they'll have AEDs, so, I mean, having, having that capability within a few minutes of the shooting, I mean, has brought that rate down as well.
As for the recruiting, I understand the challenge, and I think, I think part of what we're seeing now with all you all's efforts will really come to fruition sort of in the next generation, I think. So, that it's going to be hard to get the twenty-something year-old recruit now, but the work you're doing with the children in the schools, community unemployment, I think all of that will, you'll see it in a generation from now with an increase in minority participation, et cetera, et cetera. So, unfortunately, we, we have this sort of problem now, but I think it's hard to address, and we'll see it in the next iteration of recruits some ten, fifteen years from now. So, again, just thank you for all your efforts. Is there, and I ask this for everyone, is there anything that isn't critical for your bureau that is not in this budget?
Critical? Very critical.
One thing we have a hard time is, is hiring civilian staff. Probably more because of the salary that they're, they're paid, which oftentimes creates more work for the officers to do when they should be concentrating on other things. But we're, we're looking to see what we can, we can do with that.
What's, part, part of my ignorance, what sort of positions do you need to fill on the civilian side?
Probably the biggest issue we're having is clerical specialist, which is our most entry-level position. Because of it being the police bureau, we have additional background checks, drug testing, criminal background checks that have to pass. It lowers the candidate pool more than it is, and that position pays right around thirty thousand a year now, so. But I know that, that contract is currently under negotiation, so we have given our input towards the Law Department and the committees to explain that challenge we've had. And I think they were trying to work to get us to do that.
Out of curiosity, if, if someone were to come in as a clerical assistant, as a clericalist, how long would, on average, would they actually stay within the department?
We don't have much turnover with them leaving our department, but especially, depending on where they're at, they typically, as opposed to being downtown, they get free parking at most of our police facilities, unless they're at the municipal court building.
Rough estimate, how many are you in need of?
Right now, I believe we have nine vacancies.
Okay. It may be worth, and I can reach out to them, having a conversation with Partners for Work, they are currently recruiting for people to go into the, sort of the banking industry, and not, not entry-level, but sort of mid-level. But they may also have some candidates who are not able to get into the mid-level within the banks that are doing a lot of clerical work, and then maybe they could actually then be an ideal candidate to come into the police department. So, I can reach out to them. If you, do me a favor and remind me, send me a, a brief email saying this is the basic job description, and these are what we're looking for, and then I can reach, I'll remember, I can reach out to him.
And a, a couple things that are just, I mean, there are more down the road, but that road's going to come quick. You know, obviously, is the VA hospital site where the Public Safety Training Academy would go, and headquarters where we're at, that lease is coming up in three, three years?
Beginning of twenty twenty-three.
So, I mean, just looking down the road, there's things that we, we need to be prepared for.
Well, I'll tell you, and I can't think of the gentleman's name who owns the building where we're leasing, but he, in my last conversation with him, he is willing to do everything he can to accommodate you, to keep you there for as long as possible. I mean, he knows that end at some point is coming. But if I can be of any help in that, let me know.
Counselwoman? Okay. I thought we already had AEDs that you carried around. What is it that you're carrying in the trunk?
Carrying Narcan. We put Narcan on, what, three years ago? And the officers have tourniquet, and they've been issued trauma dressings as well, but the AEDs, they have not been issued yet.
Okay.
Just at the stations.
Oh, I, for some reason, I thought you already have them. Yeah, they should have had them a long time ago.
Yes.
Okay. You were talking about South Side, what about downtown? Are we, you know, is that station a station? Are we?
Yeah, there's, there's people down there, but it's, it's going to increase in 2020. The, the ultimate goal is to have consistency down there with the same officer, the same supervisor, who, they know the community, they know the businesses, they know who's the homeless population. So, that's, that's where we're geared to go.
Okay. And then you take out of the zone, or are you just going to be adding on more officers?
No, we're not taking out of the zones to, to do that. We've been fortunate, thanks to you all for having officers available, going through the academy and coming out into the field.
My, my concern is, because even when I was president of council, going to the meetings and seeing how many officers we are training, and then they're leaving, what's, what's been a percentage this year? How, is it going even higher than what it was before?
No, we're, we're actually, I think, twenty-four, twenty-five resigned this year, and then around that same number for retirements, and then seven terminations.
Twenty-four or twenty-five, out of how many?
Fifty-seven?
And six, fifty-six total leave year to date.
So, that's about half?
Below average. Half, half are resigned, half are terminated, or, I mean, half are retired, sorry. Twenty-four, twenty-five resigned, twenty-four retired, seven terminated. Total of fifty-six people have left.
Put that numbers down from, from last year.
But it also can go up this year if the negotiations don't go well.
Oh, we'll see how that goes. But I can tell you, there's, we've brought back officers from other departments who have left us, who've gone, and the grass isn't always greener on the other side. There's so many opportunities Pittsburgh Police provides through all the different specialty units, through the investigative squads, teaching at the academy, community engagement, patrol, supervisory opportunities that they, they just don't get on the other side. And the amount of calls we go to compared to some of the other places, the, the experience that they get from other places, or from here that they don't get in other places.
Paid less than McKees Board in Wilkinsburg. They used to be, yeah. I mean, our officers used to be the highest paid in Allegheny County. And now, they're the lowest.
I think we all agree that, I don't think we have enough to pay our officers, anyone.
I think we could if we changed around where some money goes.
No, no, I mean, I, I don't think any municipality could truly pay an officer for what they do, day in and day out, for their selfless service, putting their lives on the line. I don't think any department could do it, because I think it would probably be three hundred thousand dollars a year. But we do understand that there's, there's budgets. Our job is to try to keep them happy while they're here, provide them with the level of training to keep them safe, the little resources to keep them safe. I don't think you can go anywhere outside of our department and, in this area, and find what we have, the opportunity we have. And there's one right there that left and, and came back, and he's been an asset to us here. We had three go to Bethel Park, and all three came back.
We have four that are in Florida right now, and I think most of, all the way around the city, we've lost officers that are working. I mean, we train them, and then they go. And what I would say, yes, you can't pay an officer, but they're really, really worth.
I think everybody's hoping that there's a contract that comes back that is, one, they just want a contract so they can get that off of their mind and, and, and move forward.
But, I mean, I know there's a lot of jobs that could be cut around here, and to give the officers the money they need, I mean, there's always a will. If there's a will, there's a way. And it hasn't been fair over the years.
And we have incredible officers, like I said, who go out there each day, each shift, and, you know, they're committed, they're committed to selfless service, and they're, they do, they, they do put their lives on the line each and every day, because you don't know what's going to happen.
And they should be paid for that.
If I just may, make a quick comment, because I worry about costs all the time. But, yeah, you're absolutely right, there's, there's no amount of money that, that really is satisfactory in that respect. But when we start comparing with other municipalities, I think the chief's got a, a good point in the opportunity here. And it's not always about money, but sometimes it is as well, too. There's also the opportunity to work overtime with our secondary employment. You don't get secondary employment opportunities in the suburbs that you would hear. Additionally, our benefits are, are much better than what a lot of the other departments play, specifically the opportunity to be able to serve for twenty years and retire at age fifty. Specifically, the opportunity to be able to serve for twenty years and retire at age fifty. None of the other municipalities allow that to happen. So that's fifty-five pretty much throughout the state, with the exception of a couple of the cities. So there, there is, you know, even from a financial benefit, we're not offering a real bad deal. I, I think where some of the complaint may be, and what people look at is the first couple of years of service. And the, and the recruits, and the, you know, recruits are paid very low until they come on. And then the first and, and second year of service goes from forty-seven thousand dollars next year to fifty-four thousand, which may change. But once they, they begin to serve here, they have plenty of opportunity to be able to.
But I'm seeing people getting pay raises, ten thousand, twenty thousand. And these people put their life on the line every day. And there is enough money in this budget that could be found to pay each and every one of those officers. So they would be above these municipalities. I mean, I don't think you have the problems. The suburbs, as we get at our officers, have to go into each and every day. I mean, their family don't even know if they're coming home tonight. And I think they should be, say, with our firefighters, all of them. And I hope that in these negotiations, finally, that we see, or we need to take some of these people out to see what an officer does during the day. I, I don't think they realize what happens. I mean, look how fast we lost the three officers over in, I always think of, over, over in Stanton Heights. Just over a domestic. So I, I think it's very unfair that they're the lowest paid officers in Allegheny County. And it's not right. And we do lose officers. I mean, they go back to the suburbs. And our officers didn't retire at age fifty. And the same with their pension. I mean, yes, they get a pension, but they don't get social security, and I don't think people realize that either. So. I just, every time I get on that ramp, I just keep going, because it's not fair. And I don't know if the votes are here to throw it in the budget. It'd be nice if they were, put some extra money in there so that it would be there, and nobody can say, well, we can't pay them. Also wanted to ask you about. Oh, how, how many officers do we have now that, not the ones that are still learning, but how many officers do we have had as an average last year?
As an average last year? How many do we have right now?
Well, this year.
Right, right now, there's nine hundred and fourteen officers who were sworn out in the street or working various assignments. There's thirty-six that are in field training right now, and then we have fifty-six that are in the academy.
And how many are off because of injuries or anything?
We can, we can get it to you.
Okay. Because we, we never stay up around that number, and I'm hoping this year is a better year. How's narcotics?
Narcotics is, is, is doing well.
Okay, so we have enough guys there and detectives. I, I know our guys really get out there and do the job. Unfortunately, a very close friend of mine's grandson was one of the two boys that were shot. And your guys finally got him, they were showing his picture on television. So, and I think the cameras are helping, but.
We have a lot of, a lot of excellent detectives assigned in narcotics, who do a tremendous job each and every day.
Yes, they do. And our crossing guards. Well, we finally got one to a very serious corner down on Woodland and Shadland. But we had one of the traffic cops go down there. And all they have to do is see the traffic cop and they don't turn. You know, they're not supposed to turn on red, so kids are crossing the street there. But it was, it's a dangerous intersection, and.
We're doing a very aggressive recruitment campaign to hire crossing guards. We're about six vacancies right now. And it's, it's rather difficult finding someone willing to work those hours. So, but we are trying to get up to our staffing level.
We didn't, we didn't have a problem getting the crossing guards when they got a pension and medical. They getting that yet?
We are discussing, actually, they are in negotiations right now, so I would rather not state what, what is going on.
Well, that's what they had before, we never had a problem getting crossing guards. And when they took the pension and the medical away, you know, you can get them to work those hours, you just have to, you know, be fair with them, like, they need to be fair with the police. Okay. Officer Luffy. Is this animal service increase here for Officer Luffy, or what?
It's to cover the horses. As well as just generally increased costs of the additional canines that we've added, including Officer Luffy's.
Okay, so we have, we're up on our canines?
I think there's a couple of positions that we, we need to fill.
We have three in the academy now? In the canine academy? I think I signed off on one from a region.
One, one right now, yeah, one right now.
So are we short on them, or?
It's just we have to, we have to train them, selection and training.
It doesn't seem like anyone has a problem, you know, donating a horse or, or canine. I, I think that's great. So I, I think all of our horses were donated, weren't they?
Yes, that's correct.
And they're beautiful, and they really know how to ride them. Once again, they're on the north side, so that's good. Okay, but none of this is for Officer Luffy. Okay. Because she does one great job.
She does.
She really does. And when animal control comes up, I'm gonna do a little bit more talking, because we're having a little more serious problems out there with other, actually reptiles. So I just wanna thank, whoops. Bureau of Police. Confiscate non-narcotics, what, what is that?
So that's all the, the various seizures when we arrest people, money they may have on, we can't do anything with that.
Okay. And we look like we're low under the mounted police trust fund.
Well, that, that was a trust fund set up for obtaining the horses.
Oh, okay.
We would basically ask individuals that wanted to donate, or wanted to donate horses to pay to that trust fund, so that we could go out and select the best horses. So now that we have seven, eight, eight horses, that trust fund has dropped down. However, any money that's left in it will be used to feed the horses, provide hors, shoes for the horses, and services for the horses. So it is down low, but at one time it was very high until we purchased the horses, that's why that was set up.
I think that's all I had, but I guess the most serious. You said, one, one more thing, you said that we are at thirty-three, what were shootings?
Homicides.
Homicides. What are we, what was it last year?
Fifty, fifty-five? Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, but unfortunately, eleven of those were the Tree of Life.
Right.
At year end, year end was fifty-eight, and eleven were from Tree of Life.
Okay. And so we are down on those. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for all you do, and all of your officers for what they do.
Very blessed.
You're very, very blessed, but it would be nice to be able to keep them instead of them moving on, because we don't pay them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I just, first of all, I wanna thank you for all the stuff that your officers do, and the whole Public Safety Department that they do, between delivering coats to the community, I mean, in terms of social services, delivering coats to the community. This week, we had officers, I think we had sixteen officers helping to deliver
Yeah, sorry.
food to four hundred families with Feed the Children, it was the only place in Pennsylvania that they came, and our officers moved four hundred families in and out within two hours, and I mean, that was amazing. So I wanna thank them for that, thank the firefighters for the coat drive, thank the medics for the work that they do in teaching people the CPR classes and some other, they do, they're just there for everything, all, all three are always there for everything in our communities, I wanna thank you for all that. I do wanna, I wanna talk a little bit about the Thaddeus Stevens Building for the Special Deployment Division, and I see it's two million dollars in bond funds, as well as the one million, one point one million from Senator Fontana. He helped us get that on the state level, I believe, is that correct? Funding? Okay, so it's managing, I know that Senator Fontana got us a grant, so I wanna thank him for that, that funds, those funds as well. Do we have any timeframe for that? I, people are asking about the, when that should open, Director.
I would not, I've learned the lesson not to estimate
Yeah, me too.
I know that there has been some problems that have come up with the infrastructure. That has slowed things down. I mean, you solve one problem, another problem comes up. Apparently, there's transformers in there that have to be removed, so that's gonna take some additional weeks to do that. So I, I don't wanna estimate, I mean, it, it is moving forward.
It is moving forward.
I'm optimistic, but at the same time, the funding is there, which is a big part of the puzzle. So it is moving, and hopefully, within a period of time, the officers will have a new home.
Okay, so what I wanna say in terms of that is that, you know, we, I've just cut a ribbon, probably about, or pumped up the waters where it was supposed to be. Was probably about, about four months ago, for a project that started under Alan Hertzberg when he was in office.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and that was in Sheraton Park, so believe me, I know the slow hands of government, I mean, sometimes they're painful, but I just wanna make sure that it's all still moving forward with that, so.
If I can interject on that, Councilwoman, we'll get a better indication on when Bureau of Facilities comes up, who's managing the, the direct management.
That's on next week. It's next week, yeah. Okay, and so for that, I just wanted, I wanted to ask that part about that, that moving forward. I do wanna talk a little bit about the GBI program, and I, I think that, you know, it's been really great that Reverend and Daniel have a lot of say in what happens there. And who's, who's working on the grants and who's not, and all that sort of thing. But I think that, and I'm gonna have this conversation with Councilwoman LaValle myself, when it comes to our districts, we want to have some of that equal say. It's not to be used for political power and for game playing and all those, it's to be used for making sure that people in those neighborhoods have a voice at the table, too. And not just whoever, you know, somebody else thinks is, is a political power. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna start watching that a little bit more and having some more conversations about that. And I'm sure Councilwoman Harris asked about this other stuff with the the buildings that need renovated and stuff, and I'll ask that too later today, or during the facility meeting, yeah, I'll ask all that. But I think that, that's really just it, but I just wanna thank you for all the work that you do. I think that, you know, I, I've always said that Chief Schubert is an amazing chief, and we're so happy to, so, so fortunate to have him. But I do have a concern about the numbers in Zone Six. I know that we've, we've replaced seven officers, we have seven additional officers, but we also lost eleven, so we're still at a minus. And so I wanna know what the plans are for that, because as we're talking about opening subdivisions in other places, I wanna make sure Zone Six is well-staffed as other places. So could you tell me how you're gonna work on that?
Yeah, as, we have a group right now that's in field training, once they finish their three months, then we assign them to the stations.
Okay, but I wanna make sure, I want a commitment from you publicly, that we're going to make sure Zone Six receives.
If, if they're below the number that they, yeah, they, they will get them.
They are below the number, they had, they had seven replaced, but eleven retired, so they are short. So we wanna make sure those folks are at least filled in, and if more is possible, if we, if need be. And that, that's, that's pretty much it, because I think the new Councilwoman Harris probably asked you everything else, and I'll watch it later. But I do wanna thank all your department, I mean, the Bureau, you do a great job, Director, and I know I give you a hard time sometimes, but you're doing a great job with an awesome team.
Thank you. If we could now transition to the Bureau of Fire, thank you, Chief, for being here.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Sure. The Bureau of Fire, it is the mission of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire to protect life, property, and the environment by providing effective customer and human services related to fire suppression, emergency medical services, hazardous, hazard mitigation, emergency management services, and domestic preparedness. The rules and responsibilities of the Pittsburgh Fire Bureau as related to public safety include emergency medical care, fire investigation, code enforcement, training, logistics, and suppression. The budget for the Bureau of Fire this year, total budget is ninety million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty, thirty-six dollars. That's an increase of fourteen million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, or nineteen point four percent. Total full-time positions is budgeted next year at six hundred and seventy. Total uniform firefighters is budgeted at six hundred and sixty-seven. My last report showed six hundred and seventy-three actual uniform firefighters on budget, on, on the payroll as of November. Plus, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year for fire recruits. Salary and position changes of note, fire captains are increased by one, fire inspector by one, re-titled deputy fire marshal, as well as the yearly changes within the classifications of first, second, third, and fourth year. Premium pay increased by three million dollars, or twenty-two percent, leave buyback doubled to one point three million dollars. And retirement severance was reduced from eight hundred thousand to zero. Fire non-salaries subclasses increased by one hundred and eighty thousand, four forty-six. Professional services increased by a hundred and sixty-four thousand, community, computer maintenance increased by ninety-seven thousand, and operational supplies decreased by eighty-one thousand dollars. The Bureau of Fire also receives revenue. Wilkinsburg and Ingram Fire Services, one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, an increase of three and a half percent in that revenue line item. Safety and inspections, fifty-nine thousand dollars, an increase of three thousand. And fire records, fifty-five hundred, seventy-five dollars, an increase of eight hundred dollars. The Fire has capital projects this year. Firefighting equipment, hazardous material response equipment, there's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in Pago. The hydraulic rescue tool, Genesis Rescue. The hydraulic rescue tool, uh, Genesis Rescue Tools, uh, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bonds for that purchase. Uh, the Equipment Leasing Authority also, uh, uh, has, uh, fire vehicles in the, um, in the mix. Uh, there are, uh, one fire training, uh, academy sedan. Two fire foam tenders, uh, that were mentioned in the budget plan. Uh, there are, uh, there's going to be one leased to purchase fire aerial. And seven fire per, uh, pumpers, uh, that are going to be leased to purchase, uh, over a five and seven-year period. The Department of Public Works oversees capital projects at the public, uh, safety facilities. There are no fire station specific deliverables for twenty-twenty. Although there is design funding for the public safety training facility, uh, as mentioned before, with an additional twenty million dollars in later years for construction. The Fire Bureau itself has no trust funds. They have two grants reflected in the appendix of the operating budget. One's FEMA for assistance to firefighters grant, uh, Halo bailout system for every firefighter. Uh, amount remaining is three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. There's also a grant for smoke detectors, uh, for the hearing impaired. Amount remaining in that line item is nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And with that.
Thank you. Sir, anything you'd like to add?
No. Um, thank you for having us. Um, my name's Assistant Chief Norm Ovel. I'm, uh, the acting fire chief this week. Chief Jones is out of the office. And Chief Kokilia, who was sitting with me, is now at a multiple armed fire in Market Square that the director's monitoring for me and, uh.
Wing, uh, Wing Arts.
Uh, it was.
Sorry, okay, let's.
Anyway.
You're in. Sorry.
Um, no, I, uh, I appreciate the opportunity and I know Chief Jones does. Um, I know that Chief Jones works really hard on, uh, getting us grants and opportunities. And especially the smoke detector for the hearing impaired grant. Working with everybody involved was, uh, very good. And we're getting a lot of calls and emails from residents that saying this is great. They include vibrating pillows and light, lighted smoke detectors and things like that. And our, uh, fire prevention firefighter Lisa Epps is working diligently with Chief Jones on that project. And, uh, and that's where we are. And, uh, um, I have a lot of bullets here I shared with the director. I, you have a lot of information in front of you and, uh, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
So I really don't have any questions. Um, I just want to, I, I just want to make a comment that. I sent an email a while ago that we had some daycares, including the one where my granddaughter goes, attends in the West End. Who were having some concerns about something that they had received. I think I made a copy to you on this email. But the concerns that they were told that they have to get those pull-down alarms.
For the kitchens?
In case of a fire in some of the facilities.
The ancil systems for the kitchens?
Well, I thought it came from the city, but I, because that's what she had thought. But I found out later it came, it was a mandate from the state. And so that I want to, uh, make sure people are aware that the mayor's office is working, we're with Tiffany. And the mayor's office who does a lot with the early pre-K stuff, um, to let people know that there's grant funds available. Um, I think it's two million dollars. Uh, and they're also working with the Women's Caucus to make sure that people are aware and, and know how to obtain those funds. So that they don't have to worry about their child in a fire and if, if they're in a.
And our. And our current, our fire inspector currently has been working on all the daycares in the city along with the Commonwealth. Who just put together a spreadsheet of every daycare.
Okay.
No matter how small, if it's a single home in the state of Pennsylvania, which includes Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh.
And this was all prompted from the fire in Erie where five people had passed away. And I, at the time, I sent something to the chief asking, and I think, um. Ralph Secor, I think I copied him, I can't remember. And you, uh, asking about what our process was here and, and what do we do? Do we inspect? So I'm glad to hear that they're inspecting. And how often do those inspections occur?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Okay. Okay. And I just think that we need to put something out so people know how we're, how they can access those dollars. And I think Tiffany's working on that. I, I don't know if you're aware of that, Director. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure you're collaborating so that she knows. Okay, thank you.
One quick question so we, then we can get you out of here. Um, why, why is the leave buyback, why did it need to be doubled?
Was that moved from HR?
Yeah, that was moved from one account to another, I think. Yeah, it's just a, they're moving stuff from HR's account into Public Safety's account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was moved, uh, throughout the entire city. That, that would be.
Got you.
So you will. Compensation and.
Okay.
You will see it go down in the HR's account, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, uh, it, it was part of our move with, uh, moving benefits over as well to, if you remember a couple of years ago, we moved healthcare. Into each of the departments to better take care. So this is part of.
Better accountability, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Cool. I'm, I'm good then. Let's, uh, let's get, get you out to what's more, what's more important. Thank you for your time.
You're absolutely welcome.
Thank you so much. Be safe.
If we could have Animal Care and Control come forward?
There's a fire, darling. We won't let them go.
No, I have Chief Kokilia there, so we're.
Okay.
Fire, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
You guys done already?
Yes.
Well, only because he has, they have a fire.
Chief Kokilia want to?
I'll just call you. I can talk to the union for my questions. Okay? How, how are we going with negotiations for our fire?
Do you want to bring President Sekulow to the table?
Come on up. Yeah, I thought all the unions, unions would have been here today.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Ralph.
How's it going?
It's going well. So your, your question was how is everything going with the contract?
Right.
We have an arbitration award that's been handed down and we are just working on implementation now.
Okay. Is it positive for, for firefighters?
Yes, we believe it is a positive award.
I mean, the same thing is for you. You never know when you're gonna go out and not come home.
Absolutely.
And the fires that I've seen you guys taking care of and again with the police and paramedics. I don't know what we could do without our public safety. And your guys are really good. I see thirty-two is all decorated up. Looks great.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we'll have to do something with the other ones too.
Okay.
Before Christmas. But, um, uh, is there anything else you'd like to add as the president of?
No, I just want to, uh, thank both the Public Safety Director, uh, as well as our chief for getting our, uh, alerting system. It's not finished fully up and working yet, but the money that was invested into our system, uh, we're, we're appreciative of that. And we look forward to the, the bugs on the county side to, to be worked out so we can get it turned on. And I think it's going to be an improvement for our responses to the citizens.
The bugs on the county side.
Yeah, as I mentioned at the beginning, there's some software updates that need to be done in the county, uh, with the, um, nine-one-one center. It should be done in the next couple of weeks is my understanding. So once that's done, then we will start bringing, uh, bringing the stations online. Slowly to make sure that the system's working.
Okay, and, uh, with that system and those working, uh. For the city, uh, we still have, uh, city employees there that live in the city.
Sorry, what's the question?
Working at nine eleven.
No, it's all county employees.
Right, but the one that usually works on, on the city, uh, takes the dispatches.
It's all county employees.
Is it a city person?
No, it's county employees.
I know.
It was transferred to the county.
I know, a long time ago. But they always had a person that lived in a city. And knew the streets and as a, as a dispatcher for.
Well, there may be city, there may be city residents working there, but there, it is, uh, filled by.
I know, it's county.
It's all county.
I.
It's all county employees.
Wanted to make sure that we still had a city person doing the dispatch because. When we first went over there, we had a lot of bugs to take out the system. I can't remember how many years ago that was. Okay. Well, thank you. How, how's the trucks? Good shape? Ladders?
They received three new engines yesterday and, uh, the ELA, which I believe is coming to the table. The recommendation is, uh, Mr. Ubanic said is seven new engines for next year, two foam tenders and two aerial trucks. And, um, the conditions of the trucks, hopefully that'll alleviate some of the concern on some of the existing vehicles that we have.
Okay.
That'll be Wednesday, uh, December fourth.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you for all your mendu, um, and fire. I live in a city because I know if I ever had a fire. That I would have people that are right there with the truck, uh, to get out. I really do. What shouldn't you bring up?
No, he wants me to, uh, go to the fire in Market Square.
Go ahead. You should have left.
No, Chief, Assistant Chief Kokilia left.
Okay.
Somebody had to be here for you and the other people, the folks at the table.
Where's the chief?
The sounds are making me nervous. I'm going to be.
Apparently no injuries right now. It's a two alarm and there's fire through the roof and everybody's back. That means we have, you know, additional companies there. There's probably five engines, two aerials, and three chief officers there. That's all. And EMS and police, of course.
Do you know anything about the fire walk that we're having on a north side?
Um, Lisa Epps, our firefighter in prevention, she talked about that yesterday in the office, not in detail. But it's going to be covered with a fire prevention staff.
I hope it's more than one because there will be four fires lit there.
Yes.
And, um, they're not too close to each other where they could just run down to the next one. So I'm hoping we have at least four firefighter staff there. And that's. I thought it was only going to be one day, but it's two days now, uh, twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
But it's covered.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Now have Animal Care and Control come forward.
The Bureau of, uh, Animal Care and Control. The mission of the Bureau of Animal Care and Control is to serve the residents of the city of Pittsburgh by providing care, control, education. And, uh, resolutions to situations dealing with domestic animals and wildlife. The, uh, twenty-twenty budget highlights the total budget, one million, seven hundred and three thousand dollars, an increase of sixteen thousand dollars or one percent. Uh, total full-time positions are sixteen. Salary and position changes of note, a part-time animal controller. Increase to a full-time position, that's an increase of twelve thousand dollars plus benefits. There's no change to the Animal Care and Control non-salary subclasses. Uh, the Animal Care and Control does have a revenue line item, which is, uh. Two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, uh, projected for next year as an increase of thirty-five thou, thirty-five percent from the budget. Um, and for the, uh, capital, uh, plan, uh, there is, uh, under the ELA, the Equipment Leasing Authority. Plans for one animal control truck. Uh, the Bureau of Animal Care and Control no longer has any trust funds. That's all we got.
Thank you. Anything you want to add?
Uh, yes, just a couple of things. Uh, one is, uh, as far as a new truck for next year, that would be a new dead animal truck to replace the other one. Um, and then I do have a new live animal truck that's being delivered still this year. Um, that will really help us because in the past, when one or two trucks were down for various things, inspections, repairs or whatever. Uh, we were stuck with using a very old pickup truck. And so now, uh, I'll actually have six live animal trucks. So one or two of those go down, I, we can still provide full coverage to the city.
We are converting one of the part-time employees into a full-time employee, which should alleviate some of the overtime that has been. Uh, apparent during the last year. Um, so, and also alleviate some of the stress of, um, officers having to be forced. Uh, to work, so.
That had been done three years ago.
With that, I'll.
Thank you.
Will entertain any questions?
Questions? So, uh, groundhogs. Um, do we have, uh, cages available?
We have live traps available. Uh, what we do is during the summer, we average between twenty and forty requests per day for live traps. Um, some days more, but on the average. Um, but most people that want traps, except for where maybe where groundhogs are concerned. Simply want them because they don't want any wild animals on their property. And we don't give out traps for that. We give out traps when groundhogs are causing structural damage and/or are digging near underground tables or something like that. Um, so we do provide that. Uh, there are several environmental studies that have proven that live trapping. Produces a temporary effect only because it creates a vacuum in the environment that the wildlife will fill. And sometimes people have called us and told us, well, I just got rid of three groundhogs, but now I have all these other animals in my yard. That's because the groundhogs, even though they're not, uh, predatory, they're vegetarians, they will protect their territory. And if they're not there to do so, other animals will move in. That's a, that's a fact.
How do you determine, um, struc, structure?
We rely on the residents to tell us what's going on. If they tell us it's digging by stairs. It's digging by sidewalk. They're down by my foundation. They're underneath my garage or shed, porch or something like that. Groundhog can do a lot of damage. We know that. We do provide traps in those situations. Unfortunately, I do not have enough traps and certainly not enough staff to get all the animals out of the traps. If I increase the level of traps that I have for groundhogs that are eating gardens. There are ways to build gardens to prevent groundhogs from getting there. And so I don't really feel that as a need. I don't feel it as a need if people see groundhogs running through their yard. They're not causing any structural damage. They're not even burrowing in their yard, but they're, they're trying to hopefully forestall something that might happen, but it normally won't. Um, also there are many, many ways to protect and keep raccoons out of garbage cans. We've educated as much as we can. Uh, people have told us, residents have told us, called back, and we're very appreciative. That the, uh, options we gave them worked and they no longer have the problem.
The other problem is if we do put several hundred traps out there and we don't pick those traps up, I mean, it's. Having live animals in the traps is number one, illegal because they will die because of starvation. So we have, we're walking that. Very fine line between what is legal, what the needs of the public are, and what we can do to support it. Uh, it's, and of course now that winter's coming, you know, trapping will go down considerably because of the cold weather. And, uh, you know, we trap an animal, it starves to death and that's not the proper way.
Are tr, are traps currently available?
I, 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 only under extreme circumstances. Groundhogs actually go into a permanent hibernation. Compared to, if you go from one month to the next, if you go from like August, where we probably got in about fifty, maybe a little bit more groundhogs. To now where we average maybe only seven a month, uh, they go into a permanent hibernation. Once the cold weather hits, they do not come back out. So there's no sense of giving somebody a trap for a groundhog. They're never going to go in, into it until next spring. Now raccoons on the other hand go into what's called a partial hibernation.
So, so is it cold enough now?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm actually asking for myself at this point. Cause actually, because, no, I have.
I've learned a lot.
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a, and I see a couple of them, but it's rather, they're large. And it's now dug a hole, one behind my house, right by the foundation that is deep. And there's also a retaining wall that I have that is digging a hole under the retaining wall. And so I, so I, I still see it, but if you're saying that it doesn't make any sense, then I'll call you in the spring.
Well, you might want to, I mean, normally, since we don't really drop into a deep freeze anymore, we haven't for a few years. It's something where you could still call us and we might be able to provide a trap. Besides them starving to death, which does happen unfortunately, but that's normally that people trap over the weekend and then they'll tell us. Um, is because of, uh, the weather. If it drops below thirty-two degrees and let's say it's ten o'clock at night and you put the trap out. And by midnight, uh, the, uh, the animal goes into that trap overnight, if it's below freezing, that most likely that animal's going to die inside the trap. It's going to die a horrible death, freeze to death, basically. But that also is now against state law. So the state cruelty neglect law includes animals in traps, wildlife included. And if an animal dies inside a trap. Under those circumstances, the resident could be brought up on state cruelty charges. brought up on state cruelty charges, which can include a $2,500 fine and three days in jail. So we will still give out traps, it's just that during winter time, there's hardly any time to trap.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay.
I'll deal with it in the spring.
Okay. But if we hit a warm trend, and, you know, most, most groundhogs should go into a permanent hibernation, but one or two may come out. If they came out and it was warm, it was above 32, call and we will still provide a trap.
Okay. My second question, deer. And I, and I know it's a, I know it's a very complicated issue. But I'm now having more and more parents calling with concerns over disease, ticks, things of that nature. I'm having more and more concerns over property damage. Again, I'll speak for myself, I had a retaining wall that a deer, so I, I live on a narrow street, the deer was in the middle of the street, car comes, deer gets spooked, it runs, jumps on the retaining wall, retaining wall collapses, right? And we're now seeing, yeah, because of the weight of the deer.
Sure.
And so we're seeing more and more of that. I'm now seeing, there was almost an accident where a deer ran out into the middle of Center Avenue at the corner of Center and Heron, which is one of the most busiest intersections. And it was during school time, kids were walking down the street, the deer runs out, the kids get spooked. So we are now coming on a very serious problem with deer in the middle of the inner city. And at this point, they're so accustomed to now being there, they're no longer scared to the extent that literally, I now have deer every day in my yard.
Can I say it's deer, coyote? I mean, every...
So I haven't seen the coyotes, but...
It's crazy. I can't believe all we're seeing.
I haven't seen the coyotes.
I love it.
Well, as far as deer goes, the problem is, and I know, I know I've said this before, but I think if it's becoming that type of a problem, and not only for you, I'm sure, for probably every other community to one degree or the other, is we'll have to get together with the Pennsylvania Game Commission and see if there's a way that certain deer herds can be called.
So I, just so you're aware, because it's gotten to the point where I said, okay, we got to do something. And I reached, I did reach out to my state representative...
First with fire.
... office to sort of say, hey, I know you have to be able to, apparently you have to be able to demonstrate that this is of a serious need for them to allow the state to come in, essentially, was it Bethel Park, Mount Lebanon?
Mount Lebanon did it a few years ago.
Mount Lebanon did it a few years ago.
Maybe five or seven years ago.
And so I've reached out to them to have that discussion at the state level. Because I understand your hands are tied. I just wanted to put it on the issue, just so you're aware.
No, I think it's a good idea. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith brought it up last year.
You can call Teresa over there.
And I'm sure even my first year here, somebody else brought it up. And I understand that because we're seeing, we're seeing, I guess, sometimes the end of it, or even while it's happening, my officers go and scare deer out of backyards, or get them away from porches, or get them away from bus stops or school, school bus stops. You know, they're seeing deer with, that are injured where we have to wait, thankfully for the police to come over and humanely euthanize them. We, I have no way of doing that.
Sometimes it happens in front of the kids.
And sometimes it does happen then.
So if we know of an injured deer, because I've now, I've now seen a deer that has, I'm assuming this is just a broken leg, it's, it's...
Deer can actually, can actually run with two broken legs.
Wow.
And not be, you know, it's not, that's not ideal, but when we're talking for the police to come and humanely euthanize them, it's the deer cannot move. It's so injured, it cannot move. Whatever has happened to it, nine out of 10 times, it's been hit by a car.
Okay.
But it can't move, so they come and they humanely, they humanely euthanize it, and then we come out and we remove the carcass.
Who does that?
The dead animal truck. We do.
Huh?
Yeah. In fact, when, and we work really well with the police in both this regard and several other regards, but they send out, we send out officers to find out how injured it is. Because a lot of times the deer may just be sitting there, my officers will approach it, it'll get up and take off, so then the police aren't necessary. But if it really can't move, police are called in and then we send over the dead animal truck as soon as we can. So once they're done humanely euthanizing the deer, then the dead animal truck can remove it as quickly as possible. This time of year, though, that's really difficult. This is rut season for deer.
What does that mean?
That means that they're, the males are competing for mates.
Okay.
And one year's in order.
That's why you see the women running like crazy.
And so a lot of deer get seriously injured and killed that way. On the average, we're probably picking up between, on a daily basis, three to seven dead deer.
Really? In the city?
In the city of Pittsburgh.
Daily?
Daily.
And some of them don't get picked up?
Well...
His people don't call, yeah.
Yeah, if people don't call, it's always the assumption that somebody else will call. And so then, but yeah, in fact, in one day alone, when my dead animal truck officer left for the day, this is a Wednesday, about two, three weeks ago, when he left in the morning, he had 12 dead deer to pick up.
So, in your professional opinion, do you believe this is now the situation where we need the state to get involved?
Yes, I do. Yeah, the rut season is bad anyway, but we are definitely seeing an increase...
I'm so glad you asked.
Seeing an increase in the number of dead deer that are a result of the deer herds within the city of Pittsburgh increasing.
And the, the appropriate State Department is...
The Pennsylvania Game Commission.
Game Commission.
And that's the southwest region of PA.
I will look to set up a meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Give me that number. I don't know if that's the same as what I have.
Okay, 724-238-9523.
I just want to know what they say.
And that's the Pennsylvania Game Commission, southwest region.
I'm just coming.
And we get a lot of calls when they hold their stick about the herd, sometimes five or six deer moving along, and they're like, why are there deer herds here?
I'm not gonna lie. I lived, my mother lives down the...
I understand it.
My mother lives in his district, and I'm not lying. The one day I was leaving her house and I saw a possum or something jumping up on her wall. I mean, I'm like so boldly walking down Fifth Avenue on a sidewalk, jumping up her wall, and I looked over and I saw a deer crossing over like Fifth, I was like, I couldn't believe it. I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, that happens in my area all the time, but we're kind of, you know, we have a lot of woods and stuff around it.
I can now track where some...
You have woods?
Well, so ironically, the street that I live on actually does. I have woods directly behind my house that go up to a retaining wall that goes to the next street. And I have, actually have woods in front of me. So we have deer that just go behind.
And you shouldn't live around woods. If you don't like the animals, don't live by woods.
But no, but, I mean, it's still the, it's still the hill, which is mostly without any
woods at all. And there's deer literally walking down Center Avenue.
People have, people have been building and taking over their...
Oh, I agree.
Their area.
I don't disagree with that.
So that's why.
I don't disagree with that.
And that's why we've also seen an increase in wildlife within the city also.
Go ahead, Teresa. That's it. I'll let you guys ask the questions. Councilwoman Lavelle asked some of the concerns I have.
Hey, how much money do you have in the account for education for your officers?
Actually, we increased that from, from two years ago to last year. So I believe at least $20,000. It might be more.
It's $26,000 for, for 2020. It was 26 last...
Go ahead.
I just have one question, and I don't know that I have all the detail.
I'm gonna ask about that, oh, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna ask? Okay, I'll let her ask.
No, no, go ahead.
About that we are being charged to take animals to the Humane Society and, but we're getting charged, we're charging double, right? We're getting charged twice.
No, but my understanding is, my understanding is that they're being told now if, if somebody is bringing an animal to the humane rescue, I think is what it's called.
Humane Animal Rescue.
Right. They are to call...
Us.
And pick it up at the door...
Right.
So that they get paid from the city of Pittsburgh, which is absolutely ridiculous.
And my officers fully agree.
Are you hearing that too? Yeah, that's what I was hearing.
Yes, that's true.
She said it much better than I did.
Yes.
You don't hear me say that often.
There, I mean, I'm calling Dave about that because it's just...
I'm Dave.
Not you. Dan.
Dan, Dan Ross.
Sorry, Dave, I'm mixing, mixing you guys up. But I just could not believe that a nonprofit that's out there, and we pay them...
Yes, we do.
And we pay them when people call for an animal. That's why I started the very first in the United States, SPAY, free, free, SPAY and Neuter Program. And we have decreased by, I mean, I know we've decreased by a lot because we were paying something like, when we first started, it was like $290 some dollars to take one animal. And if you took a mom with five kittens, you were paying for those kittens too.
We're paying, we're paying right now $216 per dog we take them.
That's what it is.
$195 per cat. That doesn't include litters. And then $90 for everything else.
Give me a list of all that.
I will also do.
Okay. Because I was wondering what that was up to and...
And that actually is an increase.
You're, you're almost two-year renewal also.
We actually had, we're actually at the end of our contract this year. We have a new contract we're working on for next year.
Okay. So the Humane Society should be very, working very close with you. I know Animal Friends do.
Yes.
And I know Animal, I forget the name, Humane Rescue.
Humane Animal Rescue, H A R.
Yeah. I still go by both of the names that they have.
Everybody, just for everybody that calls on the phone, so refers to them as Animal Rescue League in western Pennsylvania makes sense.
And, and that is where we have worked for years and years and years in a partnership with A R L. The Humane Society would also take in animals.
Yes.
But you would take them out to A R L.
Yes.
But when I started hearing complaints about having to pick up an animal at the door of A R L or the Humane Society, so that they could get paid for that animal instead of just humanely for their job, is to take that animal in, it's, it's ridiculous.
Well, especially on like weekends and stuff like that, when I only have one truck, which you're, I think you're all aware of, covering the entire city of Pittsburgh, they could be on the far south side or north side or wherever, dealing with a very imminent situation, and they get a call, have to drive all the way back to the Hamilton location to take an animal from somebody that is sitting in their parking lot. Yes, I agree with you 100%.
That is ridiculous. And I'll tell you what, I know we were going after UPMC, and actually, we could have won that case if the mayor didn't drop it. But again, the Humane Society or Humane Animal Rescue is a nonprofit. And they should be helping as they always did. Yeah, but not for, I, I, that's appalling to hear that they want to get paid for that animal, so they make you rush around to come on their lot to pick up an animal from anywhere, somebody sitting there holding an animal.
Yes, and even sometimes the animal's not from the city of Pittsburgh.
And then charge the city.
Yes, and like I said, sometimes it's from outside the city.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, I know.
But again, we're working things out with them. We're trying, and they're trying to.
I mean, and I just, I just think that, you know, if they want to remain a nonprofit, they should do and help people out as they always have done. I mean, what has happened since they have came together as the Humane Animal Rescue, did I say it right?
Yes.
It's, it's appalling. And it should not be happening. And they should want to work with us.
I agree.
I mean, yes, we're bringing in less animals. We are the animals that are out there on city streets because of our free SPAY and Neuter Program, which has lowered how many animals that we're bringing in.
Yes.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
You can bring it up. I actually just got tagged in a post that somebody had, their dog got out, they took it, they were called around, they found it at an animal shelter, and long, the shelter tour that they didn't have the dog, long story short, they sent, they adopted the dog out. They, somebody else adopted the dog.
They, they have to, in three days, they, they are to hold the animal for three days. Am I correct, David?
Unless the, unless the dog has some other way of identifying it. A microchip comes in with a tag, some, some dogs still have tattoos, things along that line. But if it comes in with no microchip, no other, other way to identify it, then three days is it.
Well, what if it was three days is up, they're gonna, they're gonna...
Then after three days, they make, they start making decisions on whether, during the three days they actually have the dog, they'll be doing medical checks, behavior checks, everything else, deciding if they're going to place it up for adoption, maybe put it into a foster program, do this, that, or the other thing. But after three days, the animal becomes legally theirs, and they're allowed to place it where they, where they can, or unfortunately, in some cases, humanely euthanize the animal if they feel it's not placeable.
And the city holds that animal for an extra day.
So, so in three or four days?
Three.
Three, okay.
And, you know, within three days, you could get to both, make one phone call because they're both the same now.
And if you call us, if you call us from anywhere in the city, we're going to tell you, go Humane Animal Rescue.
Okay.
We're going to give you the address and the phone number and their hours of operation.
Why would it be after three days?
I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask. I just, I, thank you both, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting, but it just came, just as, just as we're sitting here, how timely.
Okay. I just can't ever believe that somebody would wait three days without calling either Animal Control or, I had, my dog got out one time at the gate, and she was just sitting on the street, and the truck even picked her up, and she had one eye. And I said, called in, yes, they had her.
Well, of course, now, at least since October of 2016, all, all the, all the live trucks carry, while the dead animal truck does too, but in the case of live animals, they all carry chip scanners.
Right.
So if they, if we run across an animal that has a chip, the officers will try their best to return it to the people.
Again, we started that program.
Yes, and it's been very successful. Owners are very grateful that they, they get their dogs, and even cats, if we run across a number of cats that were microchipped.
And it's just like in the summer or the winter, if you're leaving your dog out in weather, and you're not providing even a, a doghouse that is made particularly for that animal, you're going to be fined. Matter of fact, we had a newsman that, that that happened to. But any of our public safety officials can, if you have them in a car in, in all the heat...
Yes, heater cold.
Can bang right into that car and get that dog.
Or even if it's, even if it's above 32 degrees or below 90, if the animal's still in distress, yes.
Absolutely.
Public safety official can make entry into the vehicle.
I, I think I did write an awful lot of legislation.
And, that's across the state.
But I just want to make sure that our officers, are they in negotiations or...
No, they have a, they have a set contract. They're all set, ready to go.
Okay, so they're...
At least in the next few years, they have step raises in the contract.
Okay. So we're not having a problem right now with keeping our animal control officers?
No, in fact, I've actually only had, since I've been here, which I know is a limited time, but I've actually only had one officer quit that was fully trained, and two other officers quit soon after they were trained for, you know, personal reasons. So that's it.
Uh-huh.
That's all I've lost.
But, I mean, just want to say, Daniel, since we talked about your house, I have 14 deer, and, you know, before they come off, they're racks, I mean, they really have racks to brothers. And the females, we had three little ones, which took us up to 14. And we do have woods around us, and we know that, that's where we want to live around the animals, because they're going to come. So, you know, we pitch in for, you know, salt for them, and we do not feed them. That's one thing we do not do, because then they can't live without a human just going a human just going and feeding them all the time.
Right, they get imprinted, and they get used to being fed at certain times and certain food. That is correct.
And we have one coyote, we have more on the other sides, one coyote, one fox, lots of groundhogs. And if they're damaging your wall, and they're out now, you should get a cage.
Supposed to warm up. Once it does, just have someone call the office, we'll get one to you.
Yeah. And raccoons, little baby rabbits, frogs, and I got a turtle. I got a turtle. It fell in my swimming pool. We didn't shock it because, you know, the hillside fell behind us and everything. So, um, we were seeing bubbles, and all of a sudden, you know. So, I was gonna give him to the aviary and got attached to him, so I had to go out and buy him an aquarium, and now we have Lucky. But, speaking of reptiles, um, I was working on legislation about a year ago, and, uh, I'm gonna be introducing this on Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
And I would like you to read over it. It's for crocodilians and venomous snakes.
Fantastic. That's what we need.
We have them in each and every one of our neighborhoods. And, uh, yes.
I mean, live in people's homes.
It could be, that, that, that is the scientific name.
They're not running loose as far as we know.
And there's crocodiles, there's alligators, there's a lot that goes under that category. And the same with the venomous snakes, I, you know, I have, uh, definitions for everything.
She's gonna have to come back every year and do animal care and control the same.
Uh, and, um, the possession of them, because, you know, these people that, that think they're going to have venomous snakes, and they're not going to keep them in, or alligators, or anything, or have them without signage up. Better think again, because these could hurt one of our officers, one of our paramedics, one of our police, firemen.
Anybody.
Anybody. So that's, that's why I put this together, and-
I'm glad you did.
Um, I, I have it all ready to go as, as an ordinance, so, um, before you leave, I would like you to read it. But I know we, we're talking, we still talking about we're having a lot of, um, overtime?
Well, we ran into some problems with, uh, some officers that, one officer that got injured on the job, and he was out for a while, and then he came back for a week, and then he went out. But again, with the addition of, of another full-time officer next year, that will start to decrease.
Well, it's about time, and I hope they fill it this time.
Me too.
Because, um, you know, I'm sure we're gonna put it in the budget. I'm sure Daniel's gonna want them right, Daniel.
Yes.
Uh, I should say Officer Lavelle, or Officer Lavelle. Okay. But, uh, I, I didn't know, what I, what I do think, and I'm not sure, but I think you ought to go over this one more time on, uh, if you're gonna have enough money for the training of our officers. Also, um, I don't know if, if we have so-called cages, if we, if need be. Right now, I think there's problems when they pick up a black snake, you know, rat snake.
Specialty cages. I've been looking into that. So, uh, we do have enough money in the budget to cover that. Uh, and we do have, in my belief, I do believe we have enough money in, at least in the budget for next year to handle all the training I would be sending the officers.
How, how many, we don't have any cages for this, the non-venomous snakes or the venomous right now?
No, we don't, but they do make, uh, through a company that we use on a regular basis called ACES, which stands for Animal Care, Equipment and Services. And we do get a lot of things through them, so I can get, cages are not recommended for snakes. What is recommended for snakes actually is either pillowcases, but they do make specifically snake bags, and I can order-
Right.
I can order those for the officers. That's no problem. Cause they have snake hooks, and they have snake tops.
I mean, even the non-venomous snakes that we have, that I had to call them, we were coming out of a neighborhood meeting, and there, there he was, all wrapped up. I guess he was a rat snake or black snake.
Black snake, something like that, sure.
Um, and I don't think they have the equipment needed, and-
No, but I've been adding to their equipment. We now have, uh, we have what are called Freeman Cat Cage Nets, which will help them catch cats. We have, uh, not so much as helping to catch animals, but I also have in each truck-
Is that for the feral cats?
Could be for feral cats, or just, uh, what are called semi-feral cats, or cats that are just, maybe not feral, but not really used to being handled in a certain way. You can roll them up really tight, and then unroll it and get them into a transfer cage, or into a cage over at Animal Rescue League. I, I also ordered for each truck, towel and gloves, which helps them handle all the different falcons, and, not eagles, but falcons and red-tailed hawks and stuff they run into, because the, the bike gloves they have sometimes are not protection enough, so each truck has that. Uh, also, each truck also has a infrared, infrared thermometer reader. So when they're going to a dog in a car, they can tell what the temperature is-
What the temperature is.
Is inside the car, yes. And that way, they can use that to take a photograph of it, and they put it with the advise report into the computer system. And when they go to court, they can tell, they can show the judge exactly what the temperature was.
Okay, so, they're, you don't go to court?
I rarely go to court. It's up to the officers to go to court. I go to court on some things, but it's normally the officers that are fully involved. They were there, they're the one, they have eyewitness testimony and everything else, and so it's best for them to go to court.
Well, I, I, I really think you need to make sure that you have uh, the proper equipment that we're gonna need now.
Okay.
For the snakes, for alligators, or crocodiles, I mean, anything. And they're out there.
We also carry, they also now carry, believe it or not, which seems kind of weird, but they also carry duct tape if they run across alligators or anything like that. They now have a way of taping their mouth shut. They weren't carrying that stuff before, they now are. And each, each officer has a roll of duct tape.
Yes. And, uh, I'll talk more about this in, in council, but they're going to have to identify to Animal Care and Control if they have such snakes or alligators, crocodiles, anything in the reptile area will have to be, don't, they're not gonna have to pay, but they are going to have to have them.
It's a really good idea. That way, we can certainly let everybody know in public safety. That way, if there's a fire, uh, some sort of medical emergency or stuff like that, they know what they'll be walking into.
Right.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay, but your officers, I don't know how much training they have on the venomous snakes.
No training for any of my officers. I'm the only one for venomous snakes. Alligators, they actually got a lot of, uh, experience this past, this past summer.
Training, training, training.
And training on the job, and, uh, the zoo did help out. The zoo is willing to help us as that.
Yes, they have.
As far as the venomous snakes go, I, some, something I certainly could discuss with Ken Camer, who's the mammal curator over there, uh, who I have the best relationship with, and Dr. Barbara Baker.
Oh, she's wonderful.
Oh, she is. And we can see what we can do about that. But definitely, where, uh, non-venomous snakes are concerned, boas and pythons, and gators and stuff like that, as we can get more and more training for that, I would definitely be sending my officers.
Yeah, I was out there about two weeks ago, and they're doing a wonderful job with, uh, all their their animals. She's doing a great job, and so are-
And we're very lucky to have them as a partner with us, cause there's a lot of, I've worked in a lot of different cities and states in my career, and a lot of times zoos and animal control really don't get along, but here, it does work really well.
Wow. And I hope for the future that they get along just as well. So, uh, as far as the overtime, if there's a problem with that, um, maybe the person that holds the phone could take all the calls at night and decide which ones they go on and which ones they don't. Okay, so you're going out?
No, no, I don't go out. We have on-call officers. Part of the contract, the collective bargain, bargaining agreement with the, uh, union is, I'm not allowed to go out on calls.
Okay.
I've only been on since I've been there.
Are you in, in the union?
No, I'm not in the union, since I'm a supervisor.
Okay.
But, the language within the contract says a supervisor of animal care, or assistant supervisor is not allowed to go out on call unless absolutely necessary.
Okay.
So we have the on-call system.
Cause I know Gerald would go out on calls.
Oh, that, well, that was a pass contract, so he might have been allowed to do that. Plus, he was an officer before. So they, they may have been able to, uh, figure that out. But I was never an officer here, so that might be one.
Well, then maybe we'll need more than one animal control officer.
But I am the supervisor on call. I've, I've handled on-call every night since I was hired.
But, um, the only reason, and tell me if I'm wrong, any reason that we have a problem with a deer or something coyote is because we've been taking up-
Their living areas.
Their living areas. And, you know, if, if you look to buy a home, a rotten woods expect to have. Even, we have frogs, we have frogs, we have, and I love it. And our neighbors all love them too. We haven't had a problem. However, we all fence in our yards. And, uh, they're very smart, they could cross a street. So, um, but, uh, is there anything else you want to say? I have to say that any of your animal control, animal care and control, officers have been, uh, wonderful to work with.
I think I have a very good team, really good.
Matter of fact, I was at the table here yesterday, I don't know if you were here, Daniel. And I, my, my phone barked, and it was my staff, and I couldn't figure out why, and they ran out here. There was a hawk.
Yes.
Yes, and, um-
I believe that was a Merlin Hawk. My officers picked it up, and we got it to the Wildlife Rehab Center.
Yeah, and I want to know how he's doing. But I have gloves in my office. I said, you didn't pick up my gloves, that would have went out.
We actually got, within a span of probably ten minutes, we probably got ten calls.
I'll bet you, he was there in five minutes.
Yes.
They were. And, um, that's what we need. And they work well, as far as I know, with police.
Oh, police, hand in hand, we get a lot of-
Paramedics and fire.
Yes, everybody works together to do the best they can for the animals that are involved.
So, uh, if there's anything that you ever need, let me know. And after we're done, we'll go over this. Okay?
All right, we're done. So with that being said, we are now going to recess, um, our budget hearings until this afternoon at one-thirty, when we will be reviewing the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. Motion to recess?
Motion to recess.